You done?
I lost my audio.
They don't know it.
Yeah, I'm listening.
Your phone will come back in a minute.
Yeah, okay, we started.
It's okay, it's okay.
All right, thank you.
So we're gonna call the roll.
And partnerships offered by the State Department to continue to really support these efforts. Superintendent Sarah and Principal Pierce will speak to attendance more detail in their remarks. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Sarah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. And partnerships offered by the.
Thank you all. Good afternoon to everyone. I hope everyone's staying healthy and well.
Superintendent Sarah.
To talk a little bit further or deeper, we know engagement even prior to the pandemic is an issue with of our families and students in New Britain. And so going into this year, and I'm gonna speak directly to the pandemic. The focus for our teachers was around lesson planning. We really are focusing on domain to. It was something that our parents were requesting. Over the summer when we surveyed them, they really wanted a consistent lesson plan. So we thought, well, this is a really good time to help our teachers and to guide them in engaging, engaging lesson planning. And as we start to embark on this curriculum renewal, looking at the curriculum and the many resources. And so that's, that's what we're doing for our teachers. We continue to do that. As far as engaging our students and our families, you know, even before the start of the school year. All devices, Wi-Fi hotspots were delivered to students before the first day of school. So last year where we had about, oh, 1,200 out of our 10,000 families really struggling to connect with Wi-Fi. We wanted to eliminate that barrier and be ready, right? And so really looking at that engagement of tech was not the issue. We also doubled our efforts in terms of people that we hired, our family school liaisons who have been an incredible resource for us. We doubled the numbers because we understood that there were gonna be needs, significant needs for our families, just in terms of engaging through technology. Doing these home visits with our families, ensuring that there's food and they have what they need. So we take care of basic needs. Our family school liaisons, as well as our social workers and our school psychologists. They're, they're out every day between phone calling, having evening hours. We have hotlines for our families to be able to call in. We have one-on-ones where we invite friends in to help them through that support. So that's all been very positive. We still struggle and I don't think we're unlike many communities in our state. I think we all know that there's, there's no substitution for in-person learning in terms of engagement and relationships. And so at the beginning of the school year as well, we offered a four-day-a-week program. We are a hybrid model. So we have cohort A and B. Two days a week, our students are in-person learning and two days a week they're at home. Wednesdays is always an asynchronous day. But we offered to our most at-risk students a full week, except for Wednesdays from the start of the school year. In addition to that, we have a really tight partnership with all of our nonprofits in town. And I have multiple satellite. We call remote learning sites for our family members if they are working families, so they can go there for five days a week. And we scholarship anyone in. We have a, we've worked out a relationship with our nonprofits, understanding that they have to have income coming in as well. So we've used a lot of the funds that we've received to, to help boost our internet Wi-Fi capacity at all of our nonprofits. The library, the YWCA, all of those things. Lisa, tell me if I'm going too long, because I know I tend to talk a lot. So anyway, with all of that, we do know that 98% of our kids have engaged in technology. Now, the quality of the engagement is what we're working on and Damon can speak more to that with. You know, trying to create engaging lessons via technology. We've invested so much money in technology platforms, which have been critical to be able to have individual chats with students. We can see what they're working on. We can help them. We can support them that way as well. And so we can, we continue and we struggle and you know, there have been a couple of instances since the start of the school year where we needed to close our buildings for a bit. And whenever we see that, we don't boomerang back to the numbers we had before. And that's specific to our high school and our middle schools. And, and it's from fear. We talk to our families and they're afraid. And, and you know, to dispel that myth that our schools are safer than the community really at present. It's still really hard for our families to always let go and let their students come into the building. We have started a recovery task force now. It's underway. We're working really hard at all levels, K through 12, to to imagine what recovery is going to look, knowing that these extra funds are gonna be coming forward for us. And beginning, we began recovery the day we opened, right? I mean, we have our tiered supports in place with all of our students. And, and I would say I'm very, very proud of my admins and my staff. They are going above and beyond and our, and our families are very appreciative, I have to say. And are there any questions now that anyone would like to ask?
I think I'd like to hear from Principal Pierce and then I'll ask the board members when they have questions. Thank you, Superintendent Sarah.
You're welcome.
Hi, Hugh.
Yes. No, you're not muted. We can hear you. So go ahead.
All right. So I'm gonna hit on pretty really specific points here at the high school. I'm gonna start with.
You need to talk louder because it is very soft.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you, but it's still soft. So you need to use your lungs.
I will project. There we go. I will become an opera singer. It'll look a little creepy, but I'll lean in as well.
Okay, thank you.
He highlights from the high school. Tier one to me is, is the holy grail because that's the seed that lifts all ships. And I would be remiss if I did not give, I don't wanna call it a shout-out, but at least one positive that comes out of this whole pandemic thing. And that is that we have been able to close the digital divide. My back of the napkin calculations this time last year that we were five years out, we did it in a matter of months. Both student and staff capacity. So that's, that's, that's a really important accomplishment. But the next piece is all about intentional instruction. And really, this may sound commonplace to many of you, but you know, each lesson should be specifically designed by the teacher with intended learning targets and outcomes for, for students. And at the secondary level, not just in New Britain, but across the board, that's always been a bit of a struggle. We tend to view ourselves as purveyors of content. So my, my focus is really on making sure the teachers have the capacity to deliver those very intentionally targeted lessons. And we're using our data team process really as a vehicle to deliver that staff capacity improvement. I know some of you visited the school last year and you were able to sit in on, on some of those data team meetings. So they're really meaningful, really authentic use of time, but really we try to drill, drill deep down into issues and sustain our attention on it, on, on, on a single objective over time, rather than trying to hit a scattershot of emissions. And as Lisa indicated, we just did our first deep dive day, day, day last week. And our goal there was to look at the lesson plans of every teacher in the building. Because we really need to measure our progress and see how we're moving towards our goals. And we still have a little bit of cleanup to do, but there's some really interesting outcomes. I'm kind of excited about this. So first of all, we divided teachers into three kind of buckets. If they're intentional instruction, if they got it, they're in that top bucket. If they weren't intentional and we know we need to do a lot of work, they were in a different bucket. And then is that in the middle ground, right? Those that have demonstrated some capacity and some growth in that area, but still need to do some work. And interestingly enough, right now, the data is about a third and a third and a third, right? So we have a third in that top bucket, a third in the bottom, and a third in the middle. But here's really the interesting thing that I, that I kind of anticipated, but and I think the data bears me out here, is that 37% school-wide, but if I look at those teachers that are implementing the new curriculum this year, that they've been working on, they started that work over the summer. 50% of the teachers who are engaged in new curriculum are actually doing intentional, it's really focused instruction. And then in one department, that number, that's a 66%. So it really seems that our investment from the commissioners network that advanced in the building staff capacity around curriculum development implementation is bearing early fruit. So I was super excited about that. And you know, the department heads may not appreciate this, but I'm leaning on them hard to start the next round, right? So let's, let's keep the momentum going in this area. The other two areas I wanted to address just briefly are both attendance and the climate. And, and these are so intertwined, it's really difficult to separate them. And I think you'll see what I mean when I go through my, the example that I'd like to bring up. So first, as you can tell from the, the document that we sent for your consideration today, is the chronic absenteeism rate did drop last year from the year before. But I have to just make one positive qualification. That 36.8%, that's based on March 13th. But if you recall, in that final week before we closed, fear of COVID was in full swing. And so if you actually looked at our figures just from two days prior, that chronic absent rate was actually 35.4%. So I think actually we did better with overall chronic absenteeism last year than is reflected in that data that you have before. However, it's still not great. I mean, nobody's proud and nobody's bragging about even a 35.4%. So I think that improvement reflects the kind of like the general pieces that we put into place. Now we really need to drill down and target specific populations. Because absenteeism is a manifestation of many different drivers. And so the one we put our money on, literally and figuratively this year, is to really develop the Student Assistance Center here at New Britain High School. And specifically, that was intended to target students who engage in conflict. And here's why that is important for absenteeism. Because I know from looking at the last two years of students who engage in conflict, 70% of those students are chronically absent from school, right? So you're engaging in conflict, there, there are other indicators, there are other levels of disengagement with the high school. And we need a system to support those students. So that's what I mean when we're trying to really target in and drill in and focus in on specific populations. Now, the good news again for this COVID, we haven't had a lot of conflict because as Superintendent Sarah indicated, we don't have as many students, very few students actually coming in. But this has given us our opportunity to have the staff members that work in the Student Assistance Center link with those outside providers that the superintendent suggested. So our learning curve that might have taken a lot longer, our, our Student Assistance Center staff is really linked to those external partners. And that's the type of relationship he's going to do. Because our students are engaged in conflict, they're gonna need additional resources outside of school. So he's being able to develop his capacity to support those students in a more holistic and systemic way. So I'm gonna stop for some oxygen.
Okay.
And, and turn it over to you now if you have any questions.
Thank you, thank you. I'm, I'm gonna start with Bonnie Burr, who I know has a commitment at 3:30. So Bonnie, do you have any questions for New Britain?
I do. I do have a couple of questions. So number one, very interested to hear about your satellite remote learning centers. Could you explain a little bit more about how those came to be and what they do for you? Sure. We, you know, space is an issue in New Britain schools. I mean, we have very crowded classrooms. Hybrid was the way we could go because we couldn't guarantee a six-foot social distance. But you also have students who need to be out of the house. And it's better for them to be out of the house in, in, either in school or somewhere else. And so again, I have very close partnerships with YWCA, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club of New Britain, Pathway Cenderos. I could go on and on. And so we took part of our CARES dollars and we, we outfitted each of the centers with Wi-Fi. And so they're lit up. They're fully lit up now. We brought them in for training. They hired staff. So what we do is contract with them and we pay. We will pay for the students to go there. We have, it was a sliding scale, but I didn't want that to be a deterrent and we had the funds this year to do it. So the Boys and Girls Club hires staff. They'll hire college students. They'll hire, you know, your typical coach-like after-school program provider. But we provided them with training too, to be mentors for these students. And so the students on their non-school days, which will be three days a week, will go over to the Boys and Girls Club. We provide transportation as well. So they became for us a satellite to the school. What's really nice about that is if they have questions, difficulties with, with, with any instruction, especially for our elementary students, they can tap in with the teacher and the teacher will support them there. So it just becomes another adult in our students' lives that maybe takes some of the pressure off our parents and puts, you know, we take care. And then the other family, and there's been a couple of instances where the parents, like, it's just not working either. So we bring that student back to our schools for the full week. No, that's, it sounds like, it sounds like a great idea. Lisa, do we have a lot of people, a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of school districts that will do this?
In terms of the, the satellite sites?
Yeah, being able to use satellite?
You know, I think with the pandemic in particular, more districts have been looking at that option as a way to mitigate some of those strategies around COVID. But they're, they're here and there. It hasn't been widespread from what I know yet, but.
And I, I wanted to add on what Damon was saying. Prodigy is, is one of the Student Assistance Center. The counselor that's there, he is partnered with OIC. We have a very tight relationship. She has been working with at-risk teenagers for about 30 years. And so we developed a partnership and, and I wanna say we invited 16 students who had not showed up for a day. They are now coming to school or OIC on a regular basis to just bring them back in, to engage them. And, and that was, Damon was talking about that relationship that was forged from a Student Assistance Center to. And, and it was. We had the time to start connecting virtually with our providers and, and getting Damon's staff to know the providers like we know them at the district level. So it's, that's gonna benefit. That's great. I just had one other. Go ahead. No, go ahead, Lisa.
I, I wanted to highlight just New Britain in, in particular around their ability and their intentional strategic partnerships that they have with the community. They have always been very intentional with that work and especially during the pandemic, have looked to leverage these partners in reaching families and students.
No, that's, those are, that's great to hear. And I just, just one other really quick question. You identify that you, you'd been looking at platforms that work best. Which ones did you finally end up on? Which ones did you find were most useful to you for, for what you're doing with? Damon, do you wanna take that one as far as the high school?
Yeah, for the high school, Google Classroom is our platform, but then there's a whole lot of other platforms that they're using. Securely is the one that we've landed upon. And Securely is, is marvelous because it allows you to monitor what the kids are seeing. So they could log onto the Google Classroom, but they could be playing Fortnite. So the teachers are just, they'll go on and say, hey, can you get off that game? And they actually can, can, can remove them from the game, right? So that's a really powerful tool that we have.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. Don, do you wanna, you have questions for them? You're muted, Don. No, okay. Erin?
Hi. Yeah, I did have a few questions. I think it was probably a year ago that we visited, wasn't it? Was it January or February that we were there? My goodness.
January.
Was it January? Wow.
Yes.
And I know when we were there, we, you know, we got to see a lot of the programs. And you spoke of the buy-in and you were having difficulty at that time with the buy-in from stock. Has that gotten, has that improved since then? As far as, I know you were trying to get some lessons being put through, what they had to do, and you didn't really have that great of a buy-in. Has that improved since then?
Buy-in in, in what regards?
I think, I think it's surrounded the data, the data teams. Because I know we ended up going to visit one because one was actually in progress at that time. And I think it was around that, that you had a lot of pushback from some staff not, not willing to do some of the asks that you were, the changes that you were making at that time.
I'm, I'm struggling to remember exactly what the pushback might be. There's a history here of data team time. And so the collaboration piece is well-established here at the high school. But the direction, right? Telling people to change their habits that they've developed over time is going to be a challenge. But this year, and, and the superintendent mentioned this earlier, with the district-wide emphasis on planning and the creation of these universal lesson plans that we use throughout the high school has really given us the tool and the evidence to provide teachers with, like, so here's, here's what you're doing wrong. So I, I think, looking back on that, it might be less buy-in and more of my ability to effectively communicate what intentional instruction is and looks like. And with 37% of the teachers clocking in at intentional instruction, I can tell you that's a vast improvement of where we were even at the beginning of the year by looking at those. So I'm hoping that that's what I was discussing when we're talking buy-in and that would be the response. Does that make sense?
It does. And I, and I, in reference to that too, you had your three buckets. That I like that how you do that, that you put your three buckets. Now where are you gonna move with those three buckets? Like especially for those that really need the assistance, Hugh? What is the assistance? And are you using the, out of lack of a better word, the good bucket? To help the ones that need the help?
So that's, that's an excellent question. And that's what we're going to come back to the table on and discuss with this data is the, the leadership team. And the leadership team is the administrative team and all the department heads. So there's 13 or 14 of us all together. And, and those are the decisions we have to make. We don't, we have to be cognizant of what's the efficient way to do it. And, and so there's a couple of answers to this. One is that it's interesting that the, the numbers of movement. So I mentioned those, the, the impact of the curriculum having on, on increasing intentional instruction. Where that appears to have moved people the most was that middle bucket, right? So the, the teachers that had already got it, because that's the bucket that shrank when I look at those with the curriculum. And we still have about a third of the people that aren't engaging in intentional instruction. So when I go back to the team, that's our direction is how do we move those people and support them? Because I honestly believe, I'm an optimist. I believe that there's very, that there's very few people in the world that will actually dig in their heels just because they wanna be a quality person, right? It's really up to leadership to provide the support to teachers to improve their capacity. I was talking to Mike Kent, I think it was this weekend, I can't remember which. Is, is what I personally struggle with is what is that critical mass? At what point do I move forward? Because clearly we've got some work on some intentional instruction, but there are other issues we desperately have to address as a building. We know grading and assessment, for example, is a huge, huge need here. And so what I need to, you know, engage in, in, in conversation with, with many different levels of support is what is that critical mass? At what point do I move forward with those additional, those, those additional conversations and?
And if it's okay, I just wanted to add to that as well. A portion of my cabinet each week is spent on, we, we have reviewed one unit to date, right? It's a, it's an ELA unit because I wanna make sure my cabinet understands and knows very well what we're asking our teachers to do. And one of the, a lot has come out. Great conversations. I have my special education team there, my world language team there, so we can discuss. And, and so Damon, to your point, you know, we are creating a lesson plan, questions. Questions that need to be asked that will help admins ask these questions to teachers to drive it further along. So that's one thing we're working on because we're recognizing the, the struggle. And it's not just New Britain High School, right? This is across our district, clearly. The other thing that we're finding out is, you know, we're saying, you know, we have the KELP standards up front and center in our lesson plans. How well do our teachers really know those KELP standards, right? And so part of that took us on a bird walk, but we said, okay, now we've gotta bring in the training around the KELP standards as well, right? And the crosswalk between the KELP. So there's a lot of deep conversations and deep work. I wish it would move faster. That's always my, my MO. But, but we, we have to change adult practice. And the, we're gonna do that is to provide supports and ensure that we're, we're, we're taking them from the middle bucket. We're pushing them along to the high bucket. And that's gonna just be through intentional data teaming and candid conversations with people and support.
And I'm sure Superintendent Sarah, you probably wouldn't move faster if it wasn't that you were affected by a pandemic all of a sudden as well. That doesn't help matters when you're making all these changes. Is attendance, you know, as you said, still not great. And I know that you've made, you've looked at it, which is great. Because I, we always ask, like, do you know why they're being absent? So you do have a good idea of a, a certain group of why they're not there. What do, what do the other groups look like and what are you doing differently now that you know who these? I mean, we know about the ones in conflict and I think that's, you know, that's common to many districts. Kids that just are having trouble at school are the ones that tend to be absent. But what, there are other groups too, I'm sure, that fall in there. And what are you doing differently to address that, to try to make these improvements?
Well, one of these things, I mean, we set up in the beginning knowing we'd have kids who are more comfortable at the Boys and Girls Club than they may be in school. And they have counselors that they're close to there. So, so right from, you know, the start of September, we put these supports in place. As I said, the, the family school liaison, we have incentives. We have pizza delivery. At many of our elementary schools, we pick a family that's worked really hard. And I'm telling you, that, that's a real win for a lot of our families. You know, we, we give them dinner on us. Like by the end of the week, we have dinner on us. We do have hotlines for all. We, we have touched base with every parent. It's not that we haven't touched base with them. There's many reasons why. And you know, for us, we're very connected to a lot of our mental health service providers in town too. And so we connect them with mental health. The pandemic, you know, academics is not first and foremost in some of our families' minds. It's just not. We have to make sure basic needs are met. And so we, we have not only Klingberg, we have Community Health Center and CHMA who come in and they provide support for our families that need it. We deliver, we, we serve over 10,000 meals a day. We we are delivering many, many families with the food that they need for the week and the, and the basic, the basic needs, making sure those are met. I call that engagement, right? Not academically engaged yet, but we know where they are. We know where the kids are. We know that they're okay. And that's what, that's step one. You know, my hope is that I could open the doors in May, right? And say, okay, you're all coming back from May and June. You have to remember what it feels like to get out of bed, get dressed and come to work, come to school, right? And so, and we're gonna hold on to that hope that we're gonna be able to at least bring the kids back. But I can say, we are, we have evening courses going on now at the high school. We'll be starting those. Because some of our students have to go to work because the parents have lost their job. So they're working during the day. We've talked to the Chamber of Commerce to say, it's really not. We've talked to the Chamber of Commerce to say, it's really not convenient that you're letting our kids work during the day. But there's a need for our kids to go to work during the day. And so we have to recognize that and provide evening courses for these kids. And so, starting in February, we have evening classes coming in the major content areas at the high school. Um, you know, we're doing summer school in in February um for some of our family Saturday academies and those kinds of things. And it's just trying to get the kids back. Um, I did put together, we have our recovery task force um that's looking at options. There's not a whole lot out there. Interestingly, I mean, we started discussing this today in cabinet. Well, I've been doing some reading for the last week and a half, trying to find, you know, research on recovery. How do you recover from a natural disaster, how, those kinds of things? And um, and so we are looking at for our for our youngest learners uh having a kindergarten in the evening and offering stipends for the parents if they sit with their children from five to seven. The basic things that we need to recover, especially the upper grades, are our foundational skills, literacy and numeracy. And you want to be able to accelerate, you do not want to supplant during the day. And so, you know, we're really looking forward to the F R two dollars coming in. So we can use that to incentivize for our families and our staff, because our staff have done an amazing job. Uh, they're tired, I mean, they're families, right? They have families, they worry about them, they're worried about being in the school. So there's a law on teachers' plates today, there really is. So we want to incentivize, work for us, do the evening, two nights a week in the Saturday Academy for us, right? And where we're going to take kids on field trips, just to reintegrate, we have to worry about the social emotional, right? So evening tutoring sessions from five to seven will be co-taught with a special education teacher or an EL teacher and a classroom teacher for two hours to recover foundational skills. And then Saturday academies, where you just get to go on a field trip and you get to just be back with friends again. So we're working really hard at those kinds of things to to reengage the disengaged.
Thanks, so those are great, those are all great programs. And 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 kudos to you for knowing exactly, you know, touchbasing with all of your kids and knowing where they all are. That, that in itself is is thrilling to hear, that you know where those kids are, and that's so important. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Woody? You're muted, okay.
Yes, yes, Mr. Pierce, I understand that New Britain High School started the Educators Rising Program uh to interest the high school students in becoming teachers. And it's been expanded to nine other uh towns. And so I'm wondering just how that's doing. I think it's very important to start early to interest uh kids in becoming teachers.
Yeah, and and that's actually a a popular uh course selection here. Um, it's still in its infancy, so we actually haven't borne any fruit yet, but that's the type of investment we need to make as a district and as a state if we're to recruit high-quality candidates for teaching profession.
And I understand that, oh, I'm sorry, I understand that one of the students uh from the program is actually teaching now, has become a teacher in New Britain High School. Heather O'Bright is her name. And um
She's at Smalley.
Smalley, okay.
Yeah, she's at Smalley, she was one of our former grads, yes.
It's great that she came through the program and she's actually teaching back in New Britain. But I'm wondering, is there act, are you actually tracking the uh students that come through this program and following them through college to actually uh learn if they've become teachers, because that's how you'd measure the success of the program.
And to the extent possible, that academy is 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 supporting that effort. Um, but a lot of that unfortunately is up to self-reporting by the students, so it's maintaining those relationships and being able to track that. I don't have that data here, but I could certainly look into getting that for you.
I think that's important to evaluate the program over the long run.
Right, but Education Rising is not the only um program we have that's engaging kids. We're kind of laying the foundation with Prokino's In Action. Um, and that's another program where we're initiating, we started this year. Don closure is making it difficult, but uh the, one of the key components of that program is to get our students engaged in the community, supporting the community through being tutors and and engaging. So we're going to partner with Smalley Elementary School. And our hope is to spark the interest in that program and steal them into Ed Rising and continue to build um that whole core uh teacher cadet corps that way.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Superintendent Sarah and Principal Pierce. Uh, I remember that we visited you in January because it was a cold day, there was snow and ice. And um, and I think we had a very powerful conversation about um in the high school in regarding the the funding that was being given, not to really look at doing too many things, but to focus, to really um be more laser intentional into one area. And I see that you have been doing that with the lesson planning approach. With a, uh, I think um we're looking always for sustainability, there's something that will certainly continue is those tissues that you're impacting through the lesson planning a a approach. So I'm I'm very pleased to see that. I also wanted to, Superintendent Sarah, I love your energy, so I'm I'm the not happy that we have to do this through Zoom, you know, because uh Zoom doesn't translate eh the the energy that people have. But again, I'm I'm pleased to see that, you know, the the emphasis in one area that is impactful, that will be sustainable and and so on. I'm continuing to be disappointed in the um absenteeism eh numbers. I know you're trying to do many things, but here, here's what I would like for you to consider and to reflect, not necessarily today, but as you move forward. There are many, many things that you're doing. The the issue is, what of those things, what what are more impactful? Because you may be doing things that have very limited impact and eh using resources and not necessarily getting the results that you expect. So for you to, you also have been doing things for a number of years. You know, the the absenteeism, it's a trend, it's not something that is new. The pandemic, of course, has it it's, we're in, we're in a, in the middle of a nightmare. So all those things are aggravated. But I think, you know, you had a trend. You were doing multiple things in those trends and the trend did not diminish. It was more or less stable. So to me, what that says is you were not being impactful. You were not being impactful. So what is it that you need to change and look at? And what are the things that you do that will have a greater impact in engaging the students? To me, those are the critical questions. We also look at uh all of you as opportunities for learning and for sharing that learning among other schools and and districts. So whatever you can learn from dealing with the absenteeism rate, I think it's an opportunity to share, to help other school districts and to 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 identify. Um, so again, I'm I'm eh glad to have you come before us to talk about the lesson planning. I wanted to ask some, Principal Pierce, which was that department that had almost uh everybody with a perfect lesson plan? Well, you didn't say it, but if you feel comfortable about saying it, you know, I would, I would love to hear which the department was that, which uh area was that?
Uh, Social Studies. And that was the, that was the depart, that was the data team that you visited? Um, so it's the Social Studies Department.
Thank you. Could you say congratulations from from us to them?
I will.
Okay, thank you. I I again, you know, we want to learn from you and we want to see you improve. So when something hasn't improved in a number of years, it tells me that the practices, the strategies that you're using are not impactful. So what needs to change? What are, what are those things that need to to be put in place? And I, again, I know you're you're um eh eh you you provide reflection, you think thoroughly and all that, but to me, that that's the, that's the the um, what I want you to be aware uh eh from this conversation. Go ahead, Superintendent Sarah, you want to, you're dying to talk to me.
No, no, I'm, listen, I I'm learning to wait. Um, no, it's noted, I, you know, and this is, this is the most unsexy answer, but it's it's core instruction. It's it's changing adult, it's changing my teachers, my my adults. And and step one is being able to sit side by side and and plan, intentionally plan, right? And it moves like, it's like watching paint dry, it's so slow, right? But it's going to yield big results, right? So so you try to go low-hanging fruit with strategies, our FSLs, that's low-hanging. But the most impactful thing we can do is to change the way our teachers engage with the twenty-first century student, right? And that takes time. But we're, we are, we are on a path, we have got good leaders in place, and uh we're persistent.
Okay, thank you. So I I know your principal had raised his hand also, so go ahead, uh, Principal Pierce.
Well, I was, I was going to land kind of where the superintendent landed. Uh, tier-one instructions, those basic capacities. And can I have an analogy that I like to use? Is that we've spent a lot of investment on strategies. Um, but for many folks, we haven't yet taught them how to ride the bike, right? So once we teach them how to ride the bike, then they can, you know, handle positions and pedaling technique and cadence. Then they can use those strategies to really propel student learning. Um, in terms of attendance, the first thing that popped in my mind is it's really targeting both the intervention and and limiting that scope. So for example, um, Gino Ayala is working in the Student Assistance Center. So he and I are working very closely to monitor that progress, but we're not burdening everybody in the building, right? We're not distracting everybody with that, he's focusing on that. Similarly, the FSLs, that's that's, they are an incredible resource and they work very specifically with the ninth grade associate principal, right? So it's really targeted small groups in conversations where they can analyze the outcomes and work together in that small group to chart a path forward.
Thank you, thank you so much. And um, again, um, I think you heard from everyone that we're pleased with your lesson planning approach and I look forward to seeing the improvement in and and uh in uh I, you know, absenteeism. And hopefully that we can visit you some sometime in the uh in the near future. So thank you so much for coming today. And Lisa, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add?
No, I'm all set, thank you very much.
Thanks for listening today, it was nice to see everyone, stay healthy.
Nice to see you too, bye-bye, thank you for coming. Superintendent Ruffin from Waterbury.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Lopez, and uh committee members, um we'll let them turn their cameras on. And before I turn um the conversation over to the Waterbury team, I just wanted to share um a few thoughts, if I may.
Please.
So, yes, thank you. Um, we're, we're really happy to be here um to share the work to date of Dr. Ruffin, our superintendent of Waterbury Schools, with her leadership team, her whole staff and her community. Um, certainly, as you know, on September first, twenty twenty, the Office of the Child Advocate released a report regarding an investigation of Waterbury Public Schools. And since that release of the report, um ourselves, the State Department of Education have been active partners with Dr. Ruffin to support her, her team, as they work to respond to the findings of the report and ultimately improve all schools. We've learned how thoughtful and passionate Dr. Ruffin is, her district leaders and her staff are in response to the needs, certainly of all of their learners and all learners that they serve. I do want to share that through her leadership, Dr. Ruffin has implemented a number of strategies to determine the root cause of the issues of the report that I'm sure she'll share. And this work has included teachers, has included students, the families, city officials, as well as the community at large. So Dr. Ruffin and her team are here today to provide an update of this work. Specifically, um we think it's important to highlight the suspensions, the arrests, uh the delayed response, um response time, as well as the staffing model, that system of support. Before I hand it over to Dr. Ruffin and her team, I would like to recognize the efforts of my colleagues Iris White, our education consultant, and of course Lisa Lemenzo, for their ongoing support and conversation with Waterbury Public Schools. So at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Ruffin to introduce her team and provide an important update. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene, and hello, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here today, it's great to see you again. Um, and uh the member of my team who's here today is Jackie Davis, who is our coordinator of attendance and climate uh for Waterbury Public Schools. Uh, this is an entire team effort, so it's not a central office effort. It really goes down to the school, which is where you have the most effect on students and student learning and student outcomes. So it's not a, only a central office um endeavor. It 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 really permeates the entire district, what we're doing. Um, very briefly about the O A C report. Waterbury Public Schools was deeply in in involved in this work a long time before the report was ever released. And we provided some documentation to the report. Um, prior to the report being published, that were not included in the report. So I want to be very clear that the data that you received and the report that came out was reflective of data that was gathered in two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Uh, Waterbury Public Schools made a significant uh dive into the root cause in two thousand nineteen, twenty and two thousand twenty, twenty-one. And that is where we are right now, moving this along, because it's never an excuse to have large numbers of students that are going to be arrested. Uh, it is not an excuse to have high numbers of students that are suspended or out of school. And so this is not something that Waterbury has responded to because of any report. It was responded to because it was a critical cause, because it affected all of our children in Waterbury. Uh, and so I'd like uh to have Jackie Davis perhaps begin with some of the data where we actually uh moved this work in two thousand nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one. And then I'll talk a little bit after Jackie on anything that she has that covered, which could um how we eh enhance our staffing model to meet the needs of schools and also some of the um newer things like the Waterbury Voices and the S R O M O U, which Waterbury did not have uh prior to uh very recently. So I'll let Jackie start there and I'll be quiet for a second.
All right, good afternoon. Um, and thank you for the opportunity for for us to share some of the work that has been happening here in Waterbury. And so as Dr. Ruffin alluded to, we had already been working on some outcomes that we recognize as a city is not what we want to be reflective of. You know, the path that we're we're paving for our scholars. And so when we look at our data in terms of school-based arrests, um, we looked at that March twelfth data, March twelfth of last year being um when we we shut down for the pandemic. And at that point, we were already at half of the number of arrests that we had the year previously. And so that work began actually before the O C A report had come out. And again, I think one of the things that has been extremely important for us as a district is sort of looking at that multi-tiered system of supports and what we have available to respond to the needs of our students. And so one of the things that we've been intentional about is looking at the mental health resources that are available to our students. We know that um one of the things reflected in the O C A report is the increase in the amount of trauma that is coming, um that is evident in our classrooms and how we respond to that. And so it is very important to us to make sure that we're not only trauma-sensitive um and being able to recognize when a crisis is is escalating, but also that we are trauma-responsive, that we have the resources to be able to respond to a situation in a way that does not um further traumatize a student, but that helps them to work through whatever is happening in the moment. You know, how do we guide our students through that process? And so one of the things that we did is we engaged the help of our mental health agencies here in Waterbury. And so there are a number of community partners that have been just that, they have been partners with us in this work. Um, we wanted to expand that, and so we reached out to a number of other agencies to discuss um a couple of things. One of those things being how we can improve on community, on school-based and school-linked services for our students, so that we make sure that our families have the resources that they need to respond to to whatever is happening with a child and that our staff have the right connections to be able to support the development of our students. And so we've been working with some of our community partners. One of the things that has come out of that process is we have revised the M O U with Wellmore, who is the facilitator of our Emergency Mobile Crisis Service. And so one of the concerns that we had was the response time of Wellmore to a crisis call. Um, and a lot of situations that that response time puts And a lot of situations that that response time puts put schools in a position where they felt as though behaviors were escalating and there was no one to respond. And so we have been working with Wellmore to put some other procedures in place where they could respond as those crises arise. And so we do have a revised MOU with them to address that piece. The other part that our community agencies have really stepped up to the plate with is in terms of building the capacity of our staff, again, to be trauma responsive. And so they have been extremely helpful in coming up with a professional development plan of how to help our frontline staff, our teachers, you know, our maintainers, our lunch attendants be able to recognize a student before they become in the place of crisis. So just being able to identify behaviors that suggest an impending problem and how to help that student sort of de-escalate in that moment and then knowing when to refer them for additional supports. So I think the follow-up piece to that was now that we're building the capacity of our staff through these training, these professional development opportunities, how do we make sure that we have the right staff in place? And so I'm sure Dr. Roofing will share some exciting news in terms of what's happening in terms of staffing. I don't want to take away from that because it's been an absolute great work that she's been able to lead us in as a district that we're all excited about. But I think having the right staff in place, again, is something that we needed to make sure we paid attention to and that we put people in place to be able to help the development of our students. And so, again, I think a lot of the changes that have happened have been informed by the voice of our community. And so again, I know Dr. Roofing will share on Waterbury Voices, which is a collaboration that has been absolutely phenomenal. And so a lot of the work that we've been doing has come out of that broader conversation that we've had as a Waterbury community here. And I think it is absolutely essential that as this city sort of responds to some of the needs that we've identified, that there's alignment across what all agencies are doing. And so we've had conversations with our mayor that have been extremely collaborative and productive. We've had conversations with our police chief, all of the professional development opportunities that I spoke of. We've also been in conversation with the captain of our youth squad so that we can, you know, make our SROs available for those learning opportunities as well. So our SROs will be included in some of those professional development pieces in terms of trauma and responding to situations. I think the other piece too, that is critical in terms of teachers being able to respond to what's happening in their room is that we have continued our work along the lines of equity. And so we started last year in terms of a racial equity plan and rolling out professional development along those lines. And so this year, we continue with year two, where we are working with all of our high schools and helping them to understand implicit bias and how that plays out in the classroom, how that affects teacher expectation, how that affects response to behavior. And so again, I think, you know, being able to get at the mindset of our educators and help them to work through some of the issues that contribute to their decision-making has been one of our focuses. And so I'll stop there and let Dr. Roofing finish.
Thank you. Dr. Roofing.
Thank you. And we're very excited about this work because what we started to do, especially before the pandemic, was to really see a return on our investment. And we wanted to continue to see that because it's critically important that we not just spend funds, but that we see that we're getting some results for it. So when we started talking about, you know, the relationship between our SROs and our students, we learned that part of the gap was, you know, we didn't have any written down expectations, really. And many of our teachers and staff were utilizing SROs as someone to be able to assist them with discipline, which is not what SROs are in school. But without a clear plan and a definition of duties and responsibilities, that was just very hard to do because people tend to continue doing what they know how to do or what they're accustomed to doing. So we were intentional about creating a MOU that described what is it exactly that resource officers are supposed to do in the school and in the context of really being able to assist students. We also learned through a group that, an ongoing conversation with our community, but we formed Waterbury Voices, which is a collaborative group, a roundtable of people in Waterbury who are deeply concerned about what happens to our youth in Waterbury. It is co-chaired between the Chief Spagnolo, our Chief of Police, and myself and the number of community stakeholders, also involves students. So we have student voice on the committee as well as some agencies that provide resources and services and parents and administrators and teachers who can provide the voice of the actual users and those people who are going to reach the children of the most sensitive area. And Waterbury Voices has been very, quite powerful and really describing. So what is it we expect for our youth and what would that look like when we finally arrive there? We recognized several months ago that while we were saying that students needed to have counseling and students needed to have the interaction with an adult who understood about trauma, who understood how to develop those relationships with families, that none of our elementary schools in Waterbury Public Schools had counselors. There were social workers. There were sometimes social workers that were utilized as disciplinarians, but we really did not have counselors in the elementary schools. And that's a huge void. So we might have said we wanted someone to meet in small groups and to really interact with the families, but they didn't have the resource needed. And our initial plan included the addition of social workers, but through the State Department's cooperation, we were able to revise our plan and added school counselors to our elementary schools. And we're very pleased through another group that came together, we were able to really revise the job descriptions of the school counselor, the school social worker and the school psychologist. And we are well underway with advertising those positions and hiring those positions. So our elementary schools will not only try to develop a plan without the resources, but they'll have an important resource to help them to be able to meet the needs of the students. We also found that in that process, we had other community partners who wanted to get to the table to help our children. So we've partnered with Family and Children's Aid. They're actually piloting a program of wraparound services in two of our schools, two of our most needy schools. We prioritize those. And we also are wanting to measure the success as we go along. The other resource that we were able to have for Waterbury is that we, I spoke with Commissioner Durantis a couple of weeks ago. And we recognized that so many of our children have been referred to DCF. And yet it may not be a substantiated report. Commissioner Durantis has offered and we've accepted preventionists that are going to be assigned from her department to work specifically with our schools in Waterbury that will be able to help teachers and parents and families when a situation arises that really does not rise to the level of filing a report, but it does fall in the critical crisis area where someone needs to assess what the family needs to best meet the needs of the child. I think this is about six weeks from actually coming into fruition in Waterbury, as those positions will need to be advertised. And but when they are hired, the staff from Commissioner Durantis's office and our staff in Waterbury Public Schools will get together and define the parameters whereby this work will be conducted in our schools. What I'm most excited about is that that direct outreach to our families, to our children, will be able to take place in the school so that they could feel safe and so we could have a first responder, so to speak. Because not everything can be taken care of in a report. And you have to have that face-to-face conversation and build that relationship with the families to find out just exactly what those needs are. And I think this partnership is going to be able to offer that in a way that we have never been able to have that done before. We continue to, our students, to work with our current staff. And all of the positions that we hire are with the intentions of making back connectivity so that we are not duplicating duties across the board. We'll understand very clearly what everyone is expected to do and that we can measure the outcome. Everything from our human capital department to hiring the right people. We've conducted a special education audit, which has been very informative to us to understanding why so many of our children with special needs being referred, either for disciplinary and/or arrest. And so we're getting to that root cause within specific departments and specific programs that might have a higher number of students that have been referred for the police, either because of the behavior. And it escalates to defining, are we having the correct protocols for hiring staff that have the talent and the skills to be able to work with our most needy students? Or are we just going through a process of hiring people because we're short on people? And what we've discovered is that we really do have to take a look at the hiring practices of our paraprofessionals. And there's a significant difference between someone who's hired to be able to provide a transport to a student and someone who's being able to help a student with the academic needs and someone who is going to be very well-versed and have the capacity to continue to develop in knowing strategies that are effective for de-escalation. And that's a totally different way of hiring and looking at how you hire staff. And Waterbury is engaged into all of those practices. What we expect to see as we move forward, we expect to see very strong partnerships in Waterbury. And we expect to see even a stronger return on our investment as we continue to monitor the progress that we've made over time. But we have seen progress. What we want to see is we want to see continued progress and clarity of duties and responsibilities. I'll stop there in case you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Thank you. Woody, do you have any questions for Dr. Roofing? You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you. Yep, just takes me a minute. So we're talking about arrests that occur in school. Is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah. And so is this a case where maybe some of these arrests are not justified or could be handled in other ways?
I definitely believe that we have to handle them differently. I believe that teachers have to stop calling the SRO because the SRO is in the hall because we know that when a police officer walks into a classroom and addresses an issue, the level of heightened distress on the part of a student, sometimes even an adult, is elevated. And so we want to make certain that our police officers are not being called to the classroom when it's an administration's job.
Hey, thank you.
Don, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to commend you because I have worked most of my career in a public high school. And so I'm very familiar with students getting arrested. Sometimes petty things that may have been inspired by the SRO being around. So and I like what you're saying about the in-service or professional development to help staff, not just teachers, but cafeteria workers and parents to recognize situations before they get out of control. So you're doing a good job, folks. Keep up the good work. It's high school is tough. Know it well.
Irene. I don't have any questions. I agree with Don, what Don said, you know, it's tough work. And I am glad, I imagine you see the difference with the revisions that you made to the MOUs. Certainly, that will help a great deal on both ends, you know, for your staff as well as for your SROs. So I'm sure that, you know, that you'll see a difference of. And, you know, you hate to see any kind of publicity come around that, you know, the SROs aren't needed because I truly, I truly don't believe that. I, that's my own opinion. I think they're very much needed as long as they serve the correct purpose that they're supposed to serve in a school. I think they're very, very much needed and can serve a great community service. So I'm glad to see that the MOU was revised and I think that will move things forward too. But good for you for doing all this work. It's hard work.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, could you talk a little more about the racial equity plan that you said, that you talked about, about understanding implicit bias? What are you doing there?
Oh, I absolutely can speak to that piece. It's an exciting work. So a few years ago, our district actually adopted an equity policy. And so we felt that the next step would be clearly to help our staff understand how race shows up every single day in our classrooms. And so we developed a three-year rollout plan. You know, having 32 schools, being able to do professional development and do it very well, and requires an intentional schedule. So last year, we began year one professional development with all of our middle schools. The last year, they did work with CIRC, as well as some other professionals in the area. And so the way we broke it down was we did individual small groups at each one of our buildings where they had intimate conversations about people's ability to just talk about race. You know, we know that it's not an easy conversation for most people to have, but we talked about what it's like to have a courageous conversation. So we started there about the need to have dialogue. And so on March 6, we had a full PD day of all of our middle school staff. Actually, Commissioner Cardona came down and he was our keynote speaker and did a phenomenal job of talking about the role that disproportionality plays in a lot of our schools and how we want to make sure that our students are not subject to an outcome just based on the color of their skin, that all of our students should have equal opportunity and what that looks like on a day-to-day basis. And so the plan, the plan for middle school was that we were going to have one more follow-up session on that smaller group scale. But then COVID hit and so we weren't able to have that closing session. But what we ended up doing was each team developed a school-based equity team that's going to further that work now that middle schools are going into their year two. So in their year two, they're looking more at applying some of the information that they got in year one about implicit bias and race in education and privilege and what that looks like. This year, we begin year one with the high school. And so they will go through a similar process that middle school went through last year. And I mean, some of the presenters that we were graced with have been phenomenal. We worked with Dr. Walter Gilliam, who did the implicit bias eye gaze study and talked about how some educators automatically look for students of color when they're prompted that there is a behavior of concern in the classroom and how he proved that the eye gaze looked at certain students based on the color of their skin. And so he was able to come in and share some of his findings with that. We had, again, people from other agencies come in. DCF came in and shared. We had someone from Middletown Public Schools come and share the work that they did so that our staff could see how this work of equity is not something that's just happening here in Waterbury, that it's something that is happening in other districts as well and helping them to understand why it's important to have those conversations here in Waterbury. So now, once high school goes through their year one process, next year, we will do the same with our elementary school. So each of our different levels will go through this three-year process of year one, being introduced to the concept of race. Year two, deepening the conversation of looking at what that looks like in your respective buildings. And year three, continuing the practices, like analyzing where we are and what are our next steps.
That's outstanding. And Ivy, you mentioned hiring. And I remember when Johanna Hayes was working to increase the number of teachers of color in your system. Has that been successful and have you seen an impact from that?
So that has been a continued effort here in the district. And I'll let Dr. Roofing give some details of where we are with that.
Yes, we have continued. We have an Office of Talent Management and Professional Development. We have increased the number of teachers of color and educators of color across the district. And we're working on retention. And we also have And we also have some of the highest rate, if, I think, one of the highest, if not the highest in the state of Connecticut in terms of hiring a diverse staff.
You've been encouraging paraprofessionals to be developed into teachers, is that right?
Yes, we do that, and we've been successful in having some of our paraprofessionals grow in alternative education programs. We've supported them and really contributed to their professional development until the point that they became teachers in our system and continue to support them. We also have over 370 students that are enrolled in the Promise Program, where we're preparing our students to become teachers. And we're very, very pleased having as many students into that program because, you know, as I've told them, and says, as soon as you graduate, you know, we're going to hire you. So don't leave Waterbury. But at the present time, we have over 370 students that are actually participating in that curriculum to become future teachers.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And Dr. Ruffin, good seeing you. I'm used to sort of seeing you with food around us.
I miss seeing you, yes.
I'm missing that food, but that's okay, that's okay. Thank you so much to you and Jacqueline Davis for the report and for all the things you're doing. I think, as we discussed earlier with the New Britain Group, what we're looking for is of all the strategies that you're using, what are the most impactful? So we can learn from your experience. You know, what is it that you're doing that is really helping to address the challenge that you had of the students being detained? So I hope you, when you have an opportunity to reflect with your staff, that you look at that data and identify the things that are more effective in terms of, you know, everything that you're instituting. But I'm delighted to hear the fact that you're putting counselors in elementary schools, that you're diversifying the staff in the Waterbury Voices. So it's very, all very positive, and above all, the fact that you were willing to come before us and address the challenges that the report highlighted. And let us know what you're doing to improve. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. It's great seeing you, too, Dr. Lopez. I look forward to seeing you over food one day.
Exactly.
All right. I miss that, too.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin.
So we're going to conclude the meeting, and then we're going to have a follow-up informal conversation with the other link that Leslie sent, okay? Is that okay? Okay.
Yes.
I'll see you shortly.
We are adjourned, Matt.